Hey, what kind of magnifier is that class? You got on visual. What kind of magnifiers are those?
I think it's one and a half.
Do you like it? I think I'm fixing to get to that point in my life.
All right, thank you everyone for coming today to this, uh, March sixteenth force advised meeting. Now we'll call it meeting order. And Slade, would you, uh, pray for which we can serve.
That's right. Would they do that, your word promises us that you do not give us the spirit of fear, but of love and power and sound mind. Father, we pray for those to be imparted to us today. Help us, Lord, to be able to love well, love our community, to love this opportunity of service, Father, to take care of one another, to look out for the better interest of each other. God, I pray that you would give these gentlemen the source of energy that they need today to make good and wise decisions. Father, that sound mind they've promised, Father, would you give that to them this morning so that the decisions they make, Father, make sense? Father, they are keeping with your will. They help all of our community, Father, to, uh, to better understand what it means to live in a civilized society. Thank you, Father, for our first responders who are out there risking themselves. Father, we all see it, we know it, uh, innately. Father, I pray for their protection, I pray for their families. Father, I pray that you would help us all to be settled in our spirits today. That as we gather together in this place at this time to conduct the business of the county, Father, we won't take for granted the opportunity that you've given us today. Christ nature, man.
Amen.
Great vision. Uh, can we have a public comment? Census update.
Gentlemen, it's moving forward. Um, we don't have anything specific to share with you. The information about the census is being placed, uh, through the media. It's on our website. Information about the census here. We just wanted to be to encourage all of our citizens to participate in the census as they have an opportunity. Most of that can be done online. So we would encourage our citizens to locate that information and participate.
All right, next we have Ms. Mary Warren. She's not here. All right. Well, I don't see if she might go either. You're batting a thousand. All right.
Hey, Mr. President, before you go to item four, I'd like to make a motion to move, if only for the motion to do it or what? But I'd like to move, uh, I guess you want to deal with Mike Word's thing first? Hit Mike Word's thing first and I'll talk to you.
All right. Come on up, Mike.
Just twenty-five seconds.
Absolutely.
I got him on the clock.
Just tell me when to go. Good morning. What I'd like to do is ask if, uh, if it's your pleasure to, uh, go ahead and let me get the paperwork signed, or you guys sign the paperwork to declare a local emergency. What we need that for is, we have requested last week supplies from, uh, the State Department of Health and everything we've asked for is on lockdown. They, uh, from what I understand this morning, there's not even a plan that is finalized on how they're going to put these supplies out. We are critically low in Rankin County. They have all the supplies that we would ever need there, but we can't get our hands on them. I was told this morning about six-thirty, the triggering mechanism, one of the triggers is going to be, uh, has your county declared a local emergency or not? So as of right now, there's only four counties in the state that have done that thus far. I suspect all eighty-two will have that in by ten o'clock this morning. I'd just like to get in front of the line if that's possible.
Yep, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Now, was to add it? So we need to add it. I'll make the same motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Vote, ayes have it.
He did pretty good. He did pretty good with that.
Yeah.
He rehearsed and ready for that one.
Do I need to make a motion if I want to move the executive session to the front of the order? Slade, if I want to move executive session, that item at the end, move it up front in the deal on personnel issues?
It's really up to the chair. Under Rockford, uh, what we can do to follow. It's up to the chair. Chair's willing to entertain a motion to discuss the need to go in executive session. We can do that at any point on the agenda.
I'd like to ask that question if we could move it to the front or make a motion to move it to the front of the agenda and deal with some personnel issues. And the reason I want to do that to the front of the order is before we go through the rest of this agenda, I'd like to deal with some personnel stuff before.
Well.
It's up to you.
I just hate to displace all these people when we just got here.
It's up to you.
Anyone else want to do it?
Uh. I'm gonna do it sometime during this meeting.
All right, well, let's just do it. It ain't gonna make a difference, so. All right.
It might.
Okay. Old business.
Motion to approve?
Yeah.
I was just waiting on you.
I was trying to get back up.
I was waiting on you. I'll make a motion to approve in minutes.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor say aye. Aye. I'll vote, ayes have it.
I'll make a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Motion by Daniel. Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
I'll make a motion to approve Caroline's under A.
Motion by Daniel.
I'll get to it pretty quick.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
I'll make a motion for John on A, B, and C.
Geez, man.
Do A and B together and take C separately.
Whatever Ms. Janice would like. A and B together. If that's all right with John, you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, motion by Daniel to approve A and B.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
And I'll make a motion to approve C.
Motion by Daniel to approve item number C. Second.
Second.
By Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. I ain't sharing unless you want to spread those two.
No, I'd rather hear those.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My first item, we, um, request proposals for the house, house, household hazardous waste collection. Can't talk this morning. And we received two proposals. The first, um, they were both received electronically. The first proposal is from Care Environmental. It has all the elements we requested and the second is from Trade B Environmental Services and we'll review these to make sure they're in order. So I recommend that these be taken under advisement.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The next item I have is, um, we did the reverse auction and we've gotten bids for the dump trucks and the Lowboy tractor trucks in your package. You can see I'm not making a, made a recommendation. It's going to be up to you based on the buybacks and Mike's going to explain where he is on those.
Uh, I gave y'all a thing to show the money that's breakdown of what we spend year by year on the truck.
Uh, just see. Well, I'm, I'm, I understand it. Was it about oil changing?
So basically we spend, uh, again, y'all, my colleague, Jared, so basically one year we spend eight hundred dollars in oil changes on the truck. That's what it costs us first year on the truck. Second year, we're gonna spend eight hundred dollars plus about forty-two hundred dollars on tires the second year. Third year, we're gonna spend eight hundred dollars plus another forty-two hundred because you have to put tires on the truck, get it ready for auction or whatever at that point. So basically what we got is a one-year, two-year, and a three-year buyback on these trucks. That's something I hadn't really conversed with Ms. Laura about or Ms. Wanda, either one, you know, I don't know, Bridget, had to ask y'all on the budget recommendations.
As did the things to.
How does it affect us doing it year by year or two or three?
Have to look at it personally. I've seen that.
I'm, I'm trying to follow. This is showing the maintenance as far as oil change and tires. What, what are you asking on buyback?
Well, I mean, just like you got your buyback right here, Jared.
Oh, you're on the other page, another page. Okay, I got you.
You gotta go to Max or Kentworth's buyback.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I got you.
Actually Kentworth is lower on one-year buyback of nine-five-hundred dollars is what it costs for a truck. Uh, we've been, I think last truck we did was around eleven-five, if I'm not mistaken, something like that.
I think that's three years.
Three years ago.
This is the first time we've ever done the buybacks in these different increments. They're usually thirty-six to forty-eight months and he's just trying to give you the breakdown, I mean, explain what we would do to one, um, we did the four-year on the Lowboy. So it's really going to be your decision and based on Laura's, like the lease, I don't know, would they lease purchase it for one year? I'm not, I'm not real sure about that part. It's just, that's why I'm kind of.
I look at the banks. I don't know how they look at that on lease purchase for a one-year.
We've never done the one-year and we would be on a one-year, we'd almost get the trucks in and we'd almost have to start go back out for bids again automatically.
Yeah, that would, yeah, you wouldn't get them.
Because the reverse auction is more timely than the others. It can be done, it's just letting you know what's out there. It's new territory for me too. And Mike also.
So we get up to a set of tires every two years?
About a year and a half, Jay, you're gonna put a set of tires on dump trucks.
Kind of mileage usually when you figure that on one.
It varies, Jared. I mean, you know, it depends on the wear and tear, twisting you do with the trucks, you know? Some of them go longer, some of the trucks, some like construction trucks, running more consistent routes, tires last a little longer, some of these short hauling trucks, you know, it just varies.
Well, they, are they wearing out or they getting cut or just messed up?
I mean, they wear out. I mean, we try to change them out to turn them back in for recaps, you know, sort of halt and get a little change back on that, but it ain't but.
Right.
Uh, on that, but I was looking over the buybacks this weekend, you know, and I mean, basically a one-year is gonna cost you ninety-five-hundred dollars and basically eight hundred dollars worth of oil changes if you go with the one-year buyback. If you go with the two-year buyback, you're gonna cost you eight hundred dollars plus about, well, about five thousand dollars, it's gonna come out of your budget. And it's gonna cost you twenty-seven, right at twenty-eight thousand dollars for those trucks, for those years.
And you do have to pay the full price. It's not, that ain't what we'll be paying you by the truck or what the vehicle price is. That's just the difference after we trade it in.
I mean, Lowboy is pretty simple. I mean, we can either go one, three, four, or five years, I mean, on that, but where I seen a significant difference was the dump truck.
Well, easy. And that does sound high for tires, for one year? Two years?
Two years.
Two years, two years.
Tire costs four hundred dollars a piece.
Yeah, two years. Oh, yeah, I know.
They ain't nothing for the rear and the front.
I buy, I buy with that big truck.
I think they're actually.
Front ones of them are eight hundred a piece.
Yeah. I mean, we're probably a little low on that just because of what tire we put on it, what somebody wants, they contract. So that's not. So I reckon what I was looking at was the most efficient was to run and to keep as far as a budget, you know? If I'm looking at the one-year, Jared, you know, basically, and the reason I throw two oil changes in there, because I know we're gonna change oil one time in a, in a year and then we'll probably have to change again before we turn the truck back in, you know, somewhere in there. About every ten thousand miles, we change the oil on it. So I was trying to, looking at the buybacks, the one-year is the better way as far as cost savings. I reckon that's what I'm saying, but I don't.
But you'd be like, I guess, I don't know, basically that would you almost be going right back out to bid in a real soon?
How much trouble is it to go out to bid? I mean, it sounds like every meeting we can about have something that we're looking at.
I think we've got, you know, we've, we have our spec down pretty good. Steve, you know, I mean, I think our spec is pretty, pretty generic, uh, for everybody to bid. I mean, we didn't do a lot of changes this year, just tweaking a couple things just because of year model changes on that. Uh, we basically got our spec and then we go into central bid and I, Bridget handled that. She can talk more about that than I.
It's just the reverse auction is more timely. We used to turn a bid around in six to eight weeks. It takes about twelve to fourteen now after you get authority to advertise because it is a two-part process. We get our first ones last week. I was terrified because we hadn't done it, but, um, as far as the reverse auction thing, it went, it went smoothly. It was just probably the fear of the unknown is the biggest thing, is just it takes longer.
On the Kentworth, we're looking at unit price, one hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars. Buyback from one-year, one hundred forty-three, four. So we're gonna have ninety-five-hundred in that lease plus eight hundred dollars.
What'd you say, one hundred fifty?
Right. Is that bid price, Jared?
Oh, where's that one?
Yes, basically that's what we have in that truck for that year.
Oh, but. We driving that truck for less than a thousand dollars a month.
Yes.
I guess depending on interest, would we lease, I don't know.
Well, we leasing it for less than a thousand dollars a month.
I mean, basically all we got is blowing on the.
And if we go two years, we pay nearly three times that.
That's correct.
Per year.
And the Kentworth is a two thousand twenty and the Mack is two thousand twenty-one. I don't know if that makes a difference in things, in our different years.
Steve, you would, uh, if you decided you wanted to do a two-year deal, you would probably choose the Mack because the two-year deal on the Mack is a net of about twenty-five as opposed to twenty-eight. Really, it just depends.
Depends on what year we choose.
Yeah, just depends on what you guys think is the lowest and best and you've got several options that are structured here. So the one-year deal is roughly a thousand. The two-year deal, uh, is gonna end up being well, still ten thousand dollars. So thirty grand buyback.
No, that's per.
So buyback twelve hundred, thirteen hundred upon two-year deal.
Okay, okay, the twenty-seven-nine is the buyback over two years.
That's correct.
So if you said, if you said ninety-five-hundred times two years, you would be at nineteen thousand. And this is, it cost us, uh, twenty-seven-nine of course.
Well, what you get in, what you get into in year two and year three, Steve?
Is your maintenance.
Well, no, you have to extend your warranty out. See, we're just, the one-year buyback, you, you're just dealing with a factory warranty. So I mean, the bed, everything's gonna be a hundred percent under.
Under warranty.
Under warranty in one year. So all I gotta do is basically change the oil in it. We blow a tire out, I gotta replace the tires.
I thought we run the warranty anyway, all these years.
They are, but it, the more miles and the more years you do, you gotta do it extended warranty on it, Jake. It's just like a pickup. You buy a pickup, it's got bumper and bumper, thirty-six thousand miles.
The likelihood you having to call them, some of, some of it is more likely, yeah.
Yeah.
Were you talking about transmission or something?
Right, like our beds and everything under one-year deal will be a hundred percent covered where we're not after a year. It just goes back to the truck, see what I'm saying?
I didn't know that.
It's only on the, only on the drive train that we can get covered on that. I mean, we got a few odd and in things wrote in our spec that have to be covered under warranty, but I mean, right now at a one-year warranty, the bed latch goes out on it, I mean, we just call ops and get a new bed latch. You know, it don't cost us no money.
But it's just motor powertrain is what the warranty basis is covered.
After one year.
Right.
All right, so won't we just see what our options are for, what we can do as far as financing?
What is that, the, how come the Mack isn't, I mean, it looks like it's the better deal?
On the two and year, two and three years, they are, they are the lowest on that.
Better, but it's the one-year, the Kentworth is better.
Then on the Lowboy, it's.
I mean, it's get work, yeah, on that, so.
How old's the one we got? Lowboy seem like we, a year old.
All of us could be three years, you know, July would be three years that we've had.
Okay.
The ones that they're doing, I'm not sure about the Lowboys. We got one.
We got one, we play for another. We got two of them.
So it's a year old? One, how old are the ones we currently have?
I've got one that's about fifteen years old and one that's three years old.
Okay.
Actually, we're going, what we're doing, Jay, is we're going, we had five tandems here. We're actually going to one. This truck will go in as a Lowboy and we're gonna take our old Lowboy truck and put a trailer truck behind it. It's what we're gonna do on that.
Y'all understand me? So y'all want to just take this under advisement now and see what our interest rates should be, what the impact, what we can do as far as financing goes? Or y'all wanna, somebody will make a motion on any, any tournament?
I think we need to see what it's gonna cost, interest rates and financing off. I mean, do we know?
No.
That's what I'm saying.
All right.
So we're just taking it under advisement, see if that, that can be.
Yeah.
Make a motion, take this under advisement.
Before y'all make your motion now, I will tell y'all, we may not get trucks in in time if we delay this. I'm just, I know I've talked to several of these people and their, their truck's gonna get truck replaced.
Well, it'd be nice we knew ahead of time this.
I understand, Jake. I understand.
Well, I mean.
Wait, wait, you, you want to go ahead and get them now?
No, I mean, I want y'all to, I want y'all to make a decision based on what y'all, the information y'all have given right here, Daniel, but I'm just letting you know that, you know, I've talked to some of these truck people and I mean, they've got to order a truck, they've got to get a truck in, some got them in stock, don't matter to me.
So if we are worried today, can you move forward?
We can move forward, but I want to make sure that, you know, we can do this, you know, what we're talking about, am I right with Lord?
How long will it take for them to come in? I mean, if you.
Got that six-month deal?
We got them in stock, you know, some of them have.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah, tomorrow, but if you had to order them, I mean, we could be looking at June, July. You know, we get pushed back on these trucks every year it seems like and we get right to busy season trying to swap trucks around, you know.
But our buyback on the ones currently is in August, is that the?
That's correct.
On this one on the page, Truck Works said ninety-day delivery, but, um, that wasn't required in the spec, but truck, prostate didn't specify.
I knew I talked prostate.
A lot of the holdup is when they get the trucks, it's getting the bid, that, that sometimes takes longer.
I mean, it's six days with the process to get a bid put on the truck, you know?
They don't usually have them, they build them.
Yeah, they build them as they're old, they don't just wait in for us.
What's, what's the question about, uh, the financing?
This will be the first time that we've ever shot, uh, if y'all decide you want to do a one-year deal, it'll be the first time we've ever shot a one-year lease arrangement with any of our financial institutions. We have, we have no track record about what that looks like, whether, whether they do it.
But common sense would say that you're gonna be, have a better deal on one-year than you would a three-year.
Unless the, unless the financial institution doesn't believe that it can make its financing cost back in that one-year capacity.
I don't know what they are charging. I reckon where I was at with it, Steve, just for example, I don't know whether they're gonna charge us, like, we're getting two percent on our money right now, they may charge us six percent on a one-year deal. I don't know, you know?
If you guys believe it's gonna be a little higher, Steve, because they've got such a short range to recapture their upfront costs of financing.
How quick can we find that out?
Well, we can, what I was gonna suggest, the possibility, I, I, I don't really, I don't have a feel for where y'all are, if you'd like the one-year deal or if you'd prefer just to look at a two-year deal, whatever. So we kinda need some telegraphing there, but you could always move to approve the one-year buyback contingent upon you're being satisfied with the financing that's being offered by our typical financing sources, right? So you could just say if it's, if it's gonna be less than a three percent finance rate that you're satisfied, anything less than three percent, if it's more than that, we need to revisit. You can also do it like this, you can say we want a one-year deal as long as the finance rate's under three. We want a two-year deal, if there's anything over that, we, we want a two-year deal and move it back down below three.
I like that. I like the note.
I think that's the right point.
I like that.
All right, so it needs to be clear when you make the motion that what you're doing is that you're finding the one-year buyback to be the lowest and best specification, okay? So the contingency would be, it's gotta be less than three percent on your finance rate, all right? So that's, that's that and that, that, what that does is on dump trucks, that makes the Kentworth nine hundred L, the, oh, I'm looking at the wrong, that's the Lowboy. That makes the N-word, T-eight-eighty. Uh, that makes that the lowest, ninety-five-hundred dollar price, right?
Yeah.
Okay? So that's only option one. Then option two would be a two-year buyback as long as the finance rate is under three. And that's contingent obviously on the one-year deal being over the rate, okay?
But the two-year one, we would be looking at the Mack.
Looking at the Mack.
Because it's the best price.
And it's the lowest and best.
Yeah.
And, and the three-year, so you.
Well, we're just gonna go, let's just look at one and two, don't go to three.
All right. So is anybody clear that that was what the motion would be, Steve? You can make that motion if you feel comfortable.
All right, I make a motion that we look at our finance rates and if it's under three percent, three or under, we'll go with one-year on the Kentworth. If it's more than three, then we look at, uh, going to the, uh, Mack truck for a two-year, which on this paper is showing twenty-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-dollar cost to us for two years. And, uh, that'll.
That's got it.
It'll fall within that perimeter one way or the other.
That's got it.
Mr. Steve, are you including the Lowboy tractors or just that motion different?
I was just looking at the trucks, but I think we should do similar. I don't have the numbers in my head.
State that as the motion on the dump truck? All right, so why don't we, why don't we act on Steve's motion?
Say.
Okay, have a motion by Steve to approve.
Say. Whatever he said.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
So you don't have the same issue on the Lowboy and that's the problem? So you've only got one there that's low across the board. You just need to decide, you go one, two, three, or four-year buyback?
And we just look at finance on that.
And then you just look at the financing on that.
You're not rushed on that one?
No.
I mean, you don't need to do it the same way?
Well, I mean, we can do it the same way, but I mean, we just look at all the finance options on that, am I right with Lord?
Okay. Okay, but we just wanna say, how do we do that, take it?
About the cost of ownership, if they had any other factor that's laid out here? It looks like the one-year buyback's obviously gonna be the lowest cost of ownership on the low boy.
Um, Mike, do you, I mean, do you have the same issues with the low boy as you do?
Yeah, I mean, any of these big trucks, I mean, the more you run them, you know, the more they cost to run up and down the road, I mean, you know, just buy a set of filters for one of these trucks is three hundred and fifty dollars, you know? And I reckon the reason, we looked at different avenues, Steve, was try to help on the budget where we're not... I mean, it hits me hard sometimes on some certain years, if some, so many trucks coming off, like right now, I got five trucks coming off. But sometime I've got to tire them up to get them ready for them, because the contract says it's got to be a certain amount of tread on these trucks, so. Fifty percent, so I gotta tire them up, and a lot of times before it ends up happening, we tire them up, and we don't get five thousand miles out of them before they're gone, you know? And that money's going out the window before we could've used that five thousand dollars or something else, you know?
A low boy truck doesn't have to run quite as much as a dump truck.
It runs every day, that truck's got most miles on it, runs, we probably run it harder than anything we've got, you know, but, miles-wise, but, but it's not as bad on it, because it's not twisting and turning as much, it's just straight.
Make a motion that we handle it the same way.
Do you have a preference?
No.
Okay.
Alright.
I think Steve wants to make a motion, that we go with the one-year.
I think that's what Brad...
Are we going with the MACs or the three?
Yeah, I think, on the low boy, it'd be Kentworth.
The same, the same thing, the same way.
Yeah.
Same motion on the low boy.
If the interest is to the point that we're, we're not gaining anything about saving it, and whatever percent that is, we said three earlier. You know, we'll look at the one-year, then if it doesn't fit in that parameter, go to two-year.
Okay, but just basically, Jay, I mean, it's a one-year deal, and I mean, I say the same thing about the low boy, I mean, it's just like buying a brand-new vehicle off the lot, something goes wrong with you, you just take it back, get it fixed, we're not paying for no extended warranty. That's where you see the price increase.
No, I was asking, do you have a preference, MAC over Kentworth?
It don't matter, they're both good trucks, you know, I mean, we've had MACs, we've got some Kentworth trucks, they've all been good trucks to us, you know, service department, uh, works good, you know?
And that's the thing in the reverse auction, it has that two parts, that we approve the specs before they're even allowed to participate in the auction, so they both met.
Okay, so, um, Steve made a motion to, uh, approve...
I don't know if that, I don't know.
Buying one of those two trucks, I'm not sure which one it was.
Yeah, well, there's...
It depends, it depends.
On, on, on low boy, it's, it's the same.
It's gonna be a Truckworth, uh, Kentworth, that, that's the loan.
Low all the way.
Alright, Steve made a motion to purchase the Kenworth.
Yeah, Brad seconded it.
Second by Brad, alright, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's have it.
I agree.
That motion's with the same intent as you said.
But that's all standing on the financing.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's, I don't think we're gonna get it on one percent, I mean, I think it's gonna be two-year.
I think it'll be five, six, three.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be two-year deal.
Thank y'all.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you for the deal moving. Oh, wait, Mike, you're not done? You're next.
Me, ain't I?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, probably gonna have to have Tim up here to help me with some of this, but anyway, what I wanna do is discuss, y'all seen the email I sent out a few weeks ago about some bridges?
Right.
Yeah, I would definitely wanna discuss that.
Uh, but I wanna talk where we at right now, we posted Thursday, these bridges that I sent out. That's been sent to state aid. If we do not fix these bridges, you will not receive your state aid money.
So, just to clear it up, Tim, these guys came out, inspected our bridges because they're state aid roads, are they state aid bridges?
No, the county is responsible for all the bridges.
Right.
Local and state aid routes, so there, every bridge in the county is on a two-year, a, a, a maximum of a two-year cycle. They get inspected every twenty-four months. Some of them get inspected every twelve months, depending on the condition of the bridge. So, uh, if y'all remember, last year is when the bridge inspection process really, really changed.
Yeah, we started taking pictures and...
Right.
A lot of money inspections.
A whole lot, that's right, that, that's exactly right. So, the first round of that ended in August. Well, last June, uh, there were some bridges where the condition rating, one of the conditions, whether it was the deck, the superstructure, the substructure, had gone below a six. When it goes below a six, it, it's not fixing to fall in, but you have to have it load rated. So what state aid does, we send a request into state aid to have it load rated, okay? So state aid hires an outside consultant to do that. Uh, those bridges that we requested be load rated last summer, those load ratings have just come in, and that's the results for these postings.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I thought that MBOD decided to come out here and start inspecting bridges arbitrarily?
No, sir, it's...
Well, I mean, they, they basically do, I mean, it's a final deal to monitor all our bridges.
So is it the concrete decks?
A, a lot of it, Jay, is the, uh, the decks, the precast decks, uh, they're old, and a lot of them have been overstretched. Uh, and, and that's because you've got a lot of rural routes that folks are hauling logs and grain and things, uh, but those panels are not as good now as they were back in the seventies and eighties when they were put in, back then. And the county built a lot of bridges out of old parts and pieces. Uh, they replaced, uh, they might replace an old metal covert with some precast, uh, pieces that they had laying on the yard. So when the pieces went in, they might not have been in great shape. Uh, so, yeah, tha- that's part of the problem, and, and, and part of the problem we're facing now, and that's what we're trying to dive into deep right now, is can we repair, or do we have to replace? And, and just, so you know, part of the problem we face is, let's say that there's a problem, there's a crack in the cap on an old bridge, okay? Well, under the new LRFD, that, it's a four-pile cap, and the cap is different, okay? So the bridge now has five piles under it. We can't get one of those old caps, those, they don't make those caps anymore. So tha- that's what we're trying to see, if it's a deck panel, we might can find some and, and, and replace, and get them back up to where their sufficiency rating's above fifty, and there's not an issue, but, uh, some of them are gonna have to be replaced, too.
Yeah, if we use one of the new deck piles, it won't work on one of the old caps.
Right.
Right, 'cause then you got, it weighs more, and there's, there's issues there, and that's what we're trying to really dig into, and, and this is, uh, you know, you, you probably hear a lot of people say, oh, we just pulled the old stuff off, drove new piles and put the old stuff back. That's what they're doing in these counties, they have closed bridges, they're just trying to get a bridge back open. They're, they're, they're putting it back, probably with a sufficiency rating below fifty, but they got a closed bridge, so. And the county has a couple of, a few on timber piles, uh, which is just probably time to get rid of those anyway, although the bridges are really fine, but timber piles now, they just frown on those, and in their numerical ratings, it just doesn't get good ratings, so.
It's just hard to believe, we know we've had these inspections every single year, now all of a sudden, bam, we just out of nowhere, we five.
I should, well, I mean, and, and if you, if you remember, remember last year, all the hoo-ha about all these bridges being closed?
Right.
They, everybody else got hit then with closed bridges, county, Rankin County doesn't have any closed, so we're not in terrible shape. Uh, it's just some of them need some maintenance.
Might as well be closed, we can't put a school bus across it.
Do we, uh, do we need to fix all five of them this year? So what, what's the question?
Well, I reckon where we're gonna be at, uh, Steve, is, uh, we're probably looking at four million dollars to fix our bridges.
We gotta do it.
I don't, I don't have it in my budget. I mean, that's where I'm at, is, you know...
Mike, you got some money. Word. Work it out, okay, alright, we got that, thank you.
But I mean, that's where we was at last year when we talked about this, I didn't know how y'all wanted to do it, and that's the reason we brought it up, because we got to start engaging, engaging a bridge contractor to work on these bridges.
We could sit here and talk about this all day, bottom line is, we gotta fix the bridge, and we got to find...
There was something else, I thought, I thought the other day, I, we're not here two million, what we're gonna need.
It may be about two right now this year, you know, it just depend on what we get into, I mean, we're fixing to receive another round of these bridges.
Right now, how many, how many bridges we looking at? Five?
Right now, there's, there's ten with a sufficiency rating below fifty.
Yeah.
Now, all those, in my opinion, aren't gonna need replaced, some of them, and that's what we're diving into this week, and have been last week, is, excuse me, can we repair them, or do we have to replace them?
And four million will repair, I mean...
Four million, we, we would replace all those bridges. Now, I say that under the, the, the county has a, a commodity bid or six, one-year bid with key to replace bridges, that, that's how we figured the cost on that, and that's obviously gonna be the most efficient way. Now, the, we do have some LS, a little bit of LSVP money, uh, there's at least one bridge that, uh, would be eligible for LSVP money. The issue there is, you can't do it under key, you, you'd have to let a project for state aid to review and be involved in there, so we're talking about a little bit more time.
So does state aid have to get involved, either it's just a local road?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Every bridge inspection goes through, it goes through state aid and then to the feds, every bridge.
Okay, alright.
Well, what kind, what kind of money we have in the bridge?
Like, just like yours, I've never used yours as an example out there at Greenfield, Jay, whichever, somebody's splitting that one right there.
It's not mine, that's actually Brad's, but...
That's Brad's, okay. That bridge, for example, me and Tim have been out and looked at, we're not gonna be able to do a turnaround on. I mean, that's gonna be a road closure for six to eight weeks. I mean, you got a railroad right here, they're not gonna let us do nothing there, you got three other ditches coming in, it's just about impossible to do a runaround on.
Right.
Who would do the work, the county actually do the work, or is it outside?
County would put the runarounds in if it's available to put the runaround in, Brad, uh, you know, a contractor can do that, I think, under his commodity.
If, if it's bid, yeah, I don't know.
I don't think that's under his commodity to do a runaround, the county would have to do that, Greg's already saying, so. But I, I hear some bridges, we will be able to do a runaround on, I mean, we got two down here in Brandon, we probably wouldn't do a runaround on them, because it's just gonna be blocking one end of a street, they can go out another way, you know? But then you've got some roads that, uh, I will say Greenfield's probably the heaviest traffic one we got.
Yeah.
We could...
Schedule that year in the summer, where school buses...
Right.
Well, they can't go across it, now, it's focused on the...
That one halfway down.
But, uh, but yes, Steve, I mean, that's fourteen thousand traffic a day right there coming across that bridge.
And that's what, that, part of that is what drives the rating down so low, when you figure it, and it's a mathematical formula that they won't give us access to, you just plug in numbers to it. Uh, the, the traffic is what makes Greenfield, I mean, tha- that bridge, there's bridges that are, it's, it's in better shape than some bridges, but it gets pretty low posting, because, one of the things is...
That's what, yes, Mike said he went down and looked at it, and it looks perfectly fine, you know, it's like, nothing wrong with it, but yet, we, we have to...
And I'm not sure, that's one of the ones that we're really diving into, is to possibly repairing, there, there's some steel loss on the steel piles, uh, so there's potential on that one to repair. Uh, the issue is, uh, and what we've gotta try to figure out is, how long is the repair gonna give us, if they're repaired?
We're gonna get here in another five years to do it over again.
That's right.
And that was another direction I reckon we was looking for, you know, y'all, we don't wanna put a Band-Aid on this thing, in two years, we're right back doing the same thing. We've gotta shut that road down, it's gonna put the right bridge in, right, be done with it.
Tim, did you come up with the four million, or, I mean, who, how's that?
Alright, so what we did is, is, is we've got a commodity bid, I'll call it a commodity bid, with key, and it, it's got all the line items in. So I took all the line items to replace that bridge, which includes tearing out the old bridge, so that, that, that's how we, that's what we based our estimate on, was finite numbers.
Beat it out, I mean, would you get that?
So, let's, let's clarify, so what Tim is talking about is that if the county undertakes to do the repair or replacement itself, no participation through state aid under LSVP, then you can use your commodity pricing, and we got good numbers on that. We kinda have, have a good feel of the estimate there, because we know what the numbers are, it's a commodity bid, okay? So there's that, county does it, doesn't involve state aid. If you decide we, we wanna dip into our LSVP funds, then you've got to work through the bid process that state aid oversees.
How much is in there?
I think it's about half a million, though.
Uh, we might as well on one of them.
Absolutely, and, and that would be the plan, uh, and, and it's only eligible if it's not on the system, uh, so if, if, but we do have at least one bridge that's LSVP eligible.
Well, we don't have much choice, so just make a motion to do whatever work needs to be done to repair or replace the bridges.
How long would it take to do all ten? I mean, you know, I mean...
There's ten total that have a sufficiency rating below fifty.
Posted five the other day.
Alright, how long?
See, I've got, see, I've got one that goes down on Garth, uh, road over there on Wayne Chapel goes, for example, goes to Two Chicken House, Two Chicken House Farm.
It's a dead end.
It's a dead-end road, we may have to put a temporary turnaround in, just so, right now, so he can get to his farm with the feed trucks, because they're talking about not being able to deliver feed and stuff to him.
That's crazy.
Alright, Bishop, I'll make that motion.
Wait a minute, how long would it take to do, do, um, do those five, I mean, time-wise?
Well, about eight weeks per bridge, Jared, is what he told us the other day, but here the thing is, and I, I mean, I'll, I'll go ahead and say it, he's got a lot of commodity bids on a lot of different other bridges, so.
That's why we need, that's why we need to get our name in the pecking order now.
Yeah, we need to, we didn't wanna, while we're here today, talk about this, so we can engage them to go forward, try to get them over this.
Well, definitely, you know, uh, like Daniel said, or Steve, you know, whichever bridges are, we need to address first, that school buses would be impacted, you know?
Those, those are my first two groups.
And you should have eight weeks, I think, and they're right.
Yeah, okay, so Daniel made a motion to, uh, do either replace or, or repair bridges that we need to do.
Well, what about the money, I mean, do we need to put four million, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're gonna have...
How much bridge?
Yeah, or, or the other area, if we can use, you said five hundred thousand, yeah, if we got five hundred thousand in that, use that first, and then play it down?
Let's, let's walk through the process real quick, if you guys are satisfied that, that your motion's gonna be, we got to effect these repairs or replacements regardless, then let's talk about the process, what's that gonna look like? There's some design that'll have to be undertaken, walk us through the steps now, uh, of getting it done.
So the process on, let's talk about the county ones first, that the county were gonna take under the key contract. Uh, those would be, would move pretty quickly, uh, from the start, we wouldn't have to prepare a set of plans, because we're basically gonna go back with the length of bridge that's there on those. Uh, we might go a little bit wider, because they were, some of them are narrow, and that, that also, uh, hits you, uh, on your ratings, so we might go a little wider, but, uh, basically, it would be getting with key and sending them what we think is the estimate, and then let them review it and say, okay, yeah, we agree that this is, this is the quantities we need to build this bridge, and then it'd be just issuing a PO.
PO.
Right.
Schedule work, complete the work, pay for the work.
So, uh, the state aid, the LSVP, a little bit different, that, that's gonna, we're gonna have to put together a full set of plans and go through the state aid review process, so that's, that's a little bit, uh, a little bit more, uh, give it more time, actually, uh...
But that would only be on one bridge?
Right, and...
Mike can squeeze two.
Mike can squeeze two, I think, I think just one. Uh, so...
You just need to, you just need to figure out which ones you're gonna do with that, I mean, get the biggest bang for your buck on that money.
I think, I would prefer that there be two separate motions, one for the LSVP, just for state aid's purposes, uh, to let them know we're actively pursuing this.
Alright, so two motions on separate ends, Slay?
Uh, the Pleasant Street, uh, in Brandon, is, uh, I think the first, and it's a timber pile bridge. Uh, it, see, it's on the state aid route, it's not, I don't know if it's eligible, we gotta talk through that with state aid.
Slay, do you need, do you need two motions for that?
Yeah, I'd like to see why, because state aid is gonna need a copy of your action on the LSVP project, so let's separate it back. Y'all just need to be satisfied that, that the Pleasant Street bridge, if that's the one you want, is gonna be handled through the LSVP process. The other bridges...
I don't know if you know that yet, though, do you?
I, I, I do know that Pleasant Street is eligible, I don't know if there are others that are eligible, but I know it's one, I mean, it's one of the ones on the list.
I would check that one off, and then get to whatever you can get to.
Alright, so you want me and your motion to add both those items?
Add both of those items.
Motion by Daniel, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Steve, you know, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye's have it.
So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, we'll just stay at the first one?
Alright, motion by Daniel to repair, replace bridges needed.
Using our commodity pricing.
Using commodity pricing on that, and next one will be the LSP motion.
Second.
Second by Steve, you know, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's have it.
And a motion to use LSP funds?
Alright, motion by Daniel.
For Pleasant Street bridge.
For Pleasant Street bridge, and also, to put that in there at this point, I guess, to expand it, if we got additional funds, to see if we can use that, do you do that now, or does it need to be a separate deal?
Can we come by?
You just want it cleared, you want, you want Pleasant Street on standalone motions, okay, so that's, that's my motion, Pleasant Street on standalone motion using LSP funds.
Alright, motion by Daniel?
Sir.
Second by Steve, you know, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye's have it.
Makes that easy.
Well...
What?
Well, there was one thing that we didn't talk about, and I was just looking at Craig, we're gonna have to get some temporary easements for some of these runarounds, probably on some of these locations, so, before they tell another one.
Alright, do you, do you need a motion to use LSP funds on the remaining balance, whatever that is, or do we come back to that when Tim finds it?
Let's let, let's let Tim do here.
I know we're three out of five.
Work on Pleasant Street and see what we're left with, and then we'll come back at the, yeah, we got a couple hundred dollars in balance, uh, after we get finished with the LSVP.
Can you, can you split those funds, like you use, uh, say, say it's a five hundred thousand dollar project, and you got a hundred thousand dollars left on LSP funds, can you?
Yes, you can do participating and not participating, and that, that would just be for the...
In order to zero it out?
Absolutely.
Alright, what else you need, you good?
That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Alright, uh...
That was quick.
Yeah.
Uh, we have one item, Mr. President, uh, handling circle street improvements, we recommend an approval of payout number two, Thornton Construction, in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-four cents, and authority to issue the check.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Right.
Motion by Steve, or Daniel, second by Jared, you know, discussion?
Thank you, Bishop.
Gentlemen, before I move through my items, we've got our proclamation from the office of the governor, where he declared the state of emergency, and I, all I want is for you guys to, uh, I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation for the purpose of the minutes, that's...
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Daniel?
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's have it.
Is that to add, or?
Is it just added?
Actually, yeah, yeah, all you're doing is acknowledging receipt, you're not actually acting, so. Uh, item A, B... Item A, B, C, and D are nuisance property settings. They're all for April two at nine AM. I'd ask for a motion to authorize A, B, and C, the, A, B, C, and D, the, uh, setting of the public hearings.
Make the motion.
Uh, motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Daniel. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say it.
Item E is a public hearing for the Lance and Russell Varner conditional use permit at three six one six highway eighteen. This is District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. Lance and Russell Varner are seeking a conditional use permit to relocate their fireworks business to the auction eighteen building at three six one six highway eighteen during the fireworks season as regulated by state law. The building would be used for the sale of fireworks only during the period of time authorized by state law. No auctions will be held during that period. The building is located on one point eight zero acres. The property is zoned C three. That public hearing is open. I'll ask at this time if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Lance and Russell Varner conditional use permit. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, we'll close the public hearing, and it'd be appropriate for you to, uh, ask any questions or to take action.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Approve.
Send it up.
Make a motion to approve.
Approve it, yeah.
Second.
Uh, motion by Brad to approve the conditional use. Second by Steve. You know, discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say it.
Very good. Uh, item F, Mr. President, if we're ready to move, is the McLean Lodge LLC conditional use permit. This is Holly Bush Road, District Four property. We'll open that public hearing. McLean Lodge LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to expand their mining operation on Holly Bush Road from four acres to one hundred and twenty-five acres. The material will be sold for construction projects in the area. The mined area will be reclaimed as a plus or minus sixty acre lake, which will serve as an amenity to the property, uh, to the, to all of the property, uh, under control of McLean Lodge for pu, and for possible future development. Property is zoned RE one. Possible conditions that have been discussed are hours of operation, eight AM to four PM, Monday through Saturday, no Sunday hauling, no hauling at night. Uh, they, uh, will be required to keep a water truck on site. They will be required to have a flagman at the entrance to the pit, uh, a sign at the entrance that, uh, indicates caution, trucks entering highway or roadway, uh, the possibility of a haul route, uh, if the board deems it advisable and can establish that with, in conjunction with the road manager supervisors, and also the possible establishment of a haul bond. These are all possible conditions that will need to be discussed. This time, that public hearing is open. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the McLean Lodge LLC conditional use permit request. Is anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? If you'll come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Tatiana Glushko. I'm sorry, I was trying to lower it. And I live, um, in Basswood subdivision, one twelve Basswood Circle. I've been a resident there since 2010. And, uh, when I heard about this public hearing, I decided to attend because, of course, when I looked up surface mining, the things that came up caused a lot of concern. Um, so, some of the things that I'm concerned with are the impact on the environment and on property values. And I've heard that they're gonna reclaim it as a lake, recreational area, but I still want the board to consider some possible consequences. And if you allow me to read just a few things that are usually associated with surface mining, um, first of all, as the number of, uh, these mines increase, the, and their average production increases, the median value of housing units in a county significantly decreases, uh, which may lead to lower tax revenue. Uh, then, among the negative environmental consequences, there may be devastation of landscape because, uh, large areas of forest might be cleared. Uh, that threatens biodiversity. It may disrupt ecological processes that in turn may affect downstream, uh, food webs for animals. Of course, removal of top soil may alter the natural flow of water, and that may not allow for proper ground absorption and prevention of, um, floods. It may lead to soil erosion. Then, um, usually chemicals that are released may affect, uh, fish, which may result in their reproductive failures. It may also lead to landslides. Standing pools of water may breed mosquitoes. And, of course, uh, there is a known effect on human health, um, caused by water pollution that may result from surface mining. And also, air pollution as hazardous airborne dust is released into the atmosphere. And that, of course, may affect people with chronic pulmonary diseases, hypertension, lung cancer, chronic heart, uh, conditions, and kidney diseases. And also, surface mining was associated with burst defects. And, of course, it will affect the roads, uh, because of the trucks and shovels that will be, um, that will travel there. So, I would just like the board to consider possible implications for the county and for people who live here, uh, before, um, the board makes any decisions. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to this conditional use permit request? Anyone? Before we close the public hearing, do we have any, uh, questions of the applicant or representatives of the applicant? Yes, uh, if I could have representatives of the applicant come forward, please. Please state your name and record, and also state to the board how it is that you represent the applicant.
Uh, my name is Sean Neely, and I'm an employee of McLean. How you doing? Been good.
Tell me, is this gonna be, I haven't looked at the map. Is it very close to Holly Bush Road or setback?
Okay, so originally what we did, and we've done all this through, um, DEQ, is we had a four acre permit to start with just to get the ball rolling. So, um, we've done most of what we're gonna do there. So, now, we're gonna go deeper back, farther away from Holly Bush Road, um, towards, I guess Pill Hatch Creek is the way to describe it. And then, we're gonna go towards Stump Ridge Road more, um, but deeper back in the woods. Um, so that, that's kinda where we are now. We've done, um, the stormwater drainage and all that's been approved through DEQ. We're just waiting on this last permit to get approved once we get through this. Um, so, any, anything that you'll see now, um, will just be trucks entering Holly Bush Road, that's it. All the rest of, um, you know, the clearing and everything will be farther back that people won't see.
I'm thinking the dust, it'll be setback further off.
Yes, sir. Well, what we're doing is, so, of course, this, the purpose of this is for a recreational lake and then, um, possible residential development behind it. Um, so what we're gonna do is start on the backside and then come this way. Um, that way, you know, it keeps it, you know, it's surrounded by our land, so it keeps it kind of on our land and away from-
Public.
Public land.
How long do you think this will take? I mean, could you give me a timeframe?
It just depends. We, we've had the engineers at Benchmark look at everything, and we've got it all laid out, but it just depends on the shape of the land and what we have to move around to, to get the lake the way we want it to. We wanted, we were originally gonna have an eight foot, um, levee or dam or whatever around the backside, but then, um, that wouldn't work with the housing lots. So, we have, we're gonna have to dig down instead of having-
Right.
-a berm or levee or whatever. So, um, just depending on, on how, they're not quite finished with the lake itself. So, depending on that, um, you know, it could be several years.
But you, so you're not hauling dirt out of there?
Yes, sir. Like, we can't, we can't use, we can't use all that dirt for building the lake, so we're just gonna, we're, we'll sell some of the dirt, yes, sir.
Because you said trucks will be entering. They didn't say that-
Well, yeah, entering next to, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got you. And Holly Bush Road is a day road, I'm sure of that. So, that would be probably a road that we would, that's where we direct the trucks, uh, I mean, for haul.
And what we did, um, is, we, we moved the entrance and exit. Right now, it's, um, it's, I'm trying to figure out how to describe it. It's closer to highway twenty-five. Now, we're moving it down closer to Stump Ridge Road, so it's a flat, and it's an open area so people can see the trucks coming in and going. And so, it does, you know, there's a couple hills in there. And so, we moved it away from those hills so it would be in a flat so they could see both directions well.
I would say the thing that concerns more people than, uh, is timeframe. Uh, we don't wanna have this just opening.
We want, we want it done as fast as possible, but it all depends on the weather.
Can we, can we say three years and if you need to come back?
Yes, sir.
And we'll relook at it. That way, I can-
Um, through the DEQ, our permit, um, expires within that three years.
Okay.
So, that would fall into place with that.
Alright.
So, are you going to, as you dig, dig the lake, is the goal to dig the lake or sell the dirt?
Well, it's, okay, so, it's one and the same. So, we talked about, so, right now, um, we're trying to direct more traffic, of course. Um, so, we have lodging. We have, of course, the restaurants and the animals and all that. So, the only thing we're missing is water. So, we started talking about it, and we've got, you know, two thousand acres total out there. So, we talked about the lake, and then, so, um, we had to figure out how to make it work. Well, to make it work, to generate the money for the lake, is to sell part of the dirt, and that will fund part of the lake, which will fund the development.
I just think it's gonna take you a long time to sell that much dirt. I don't know if you can get it done in three years.
There, there's a lot, well, of course, you know, there's a lot of construction going on out there.
And there's also several other dirt pits that were established. I, I just think you're gonna be a lot longer in three years i- if you're gonna have to sell the dirt to dig the lake, or are you gonna just dig the lake and move the dirt?
Well, the way we did it is, so, this thing keeps getting smaller and smaller. It was gonna be around a hundred acres, and then, we started looking at timeframes and all that type of stuff. So, it's gotten down to about forty acres, forty, forty to fifty acres, depending on. And that's what the engineers, you know, we keep going back to the drawing board to kind of figure out the lake part. So, um, you know, it's not as big as it originally started out. It's gotten down to somewhere.
It was my understanding, um, when, boy, that the lodge and, and that area out there is building, uh, uh, that this lake would be for, same as the lodge and the animals and, I mean, a scenery type deal, and then, it could be some development around it. Uh, first really conversations that I heard, it was building a lake. Uh, just about every time somebody builds a lake, they do have dirt that they get rid of. And I understand, you know, everything that is negative about it, but also, you have to think of every house this built in Rankin County. Nearly every house has to have a dirt pad, and they generally have to have it hauled from somewhere. So, when you're sitting in your own home that was built in the last fifteen years, probably had some dirt hauled in there, and it had to come from somewhere. We just don't want it coming from where we live. But, that area out there is one of the fastest growing areas in Rankin County, so if we don't have dirt sufficient, then you gotta haul it from a further distance to bring it there, and then you're disrupting even more people.
And that's kind of where I got to from the county standpoint was, you know, and I talked to Buddy about it, was, you know, with all that development right there on Stump Ridge, and then along Holly Bush, um, there's new development every day. That's the shortest path to haul that dirt is from there to there, you know, just, it's right there. So, um, less wearing chair on the road is kind of the way I was looking at it.
And it's only about a mile, mile and a half to highway twenty-five to where, if they're, aren't going out, they'd be on highway pretty quickly. Alright.
You know, it's, I know you can't control the people haul out of your pit, but, you know, there are, there's a stretch down Holly Bush where houses are right on top of the road. And, you know, unfortunately, we don't have radar, but we do need to make sure those trucks, you know, don't go hauling butt down.
That is, that would be a major responsibility for y'all because Mike and the sheriff are the ones that really get pounded, and me, whenever these trucks drive fast or dangerous. Uh, and it's, it's even in times that Mike has had to shut down pits because they weren't addressing these type things. So, that will be, you know, y'all's responsibility, even though it's not your truck.
Yes, sir. And that, that affects us also because we have a business right there with lots of children and everything else. So, we understand.
Yeah.
Alright.
Any more questions of the applicant?
I'm just asking this, that, for Holly Bush State Aid, but it's gonna, it's still gonna be, uh, what about where on it? All the, you know, we got some other state aid that we have, we may cover too.
That's what I think. Craig said that there'd be a possibility we may wanna bond it.
Right, because that, that road was a discussion back earlier.
Yep.
That I had to have state aid.
Yep.
Newly done, just like yours, yeah.
I don't know if you can bond, make somebody behind state aid road.
I don't know. I mean, that would be a Craig and applicant-
Well, the difference, the difference with this one, I think it actually went through the city. So, the city was about, actually behind part of that.
Yeah.
And we have put up a bond for the reclamation of, of all the lake and dirt work. Not, OCDQ, we've already done that.
Yeah, what they were talking about.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, we've already put that up also.
What, uh, what we can look at, we can explore the issue of bonds as well. I, I kind of default with, uh, with Jay that we're, we may be taking a little more liberty with our jurisdiction, especially when we ask the state to come in and help us keep up roads and maintain roads. Uh, so, we, we would wanna be careful and take a look and make sure we jurisdictionally, we're in good shape there. But typically, what we've done in the past with road managers, make sure we just got really good, a really good understanding about protecting that ingress, egress area. That's where most of the damage is gonna happen.
Right.
Is right there. Speed of trucks, if we can keep that under control, that, that helps us. The slower they go, the less, help the engineer, isolation issues with the pavement that you get with that speed and that load.
Hey, here, here's the only thing I want to mention, just, just as a, as a request, just stay on your haul routes. That, that's the main thing. Whatever route they give you to stay onto, stay on those. The biggest complaints I get from around the area, and I get them, I've been, had a lot over the weekend, the last several weeks, on Mount Elm Road, on the other side of Mount Elm Road, I guess on the west side of twenty-five. But trucks aren't supposed to be over there, right? And they're, they're off their roads, and they're tearing up roads that we don't need tore up. So, we're trying to limit and minimize the route. So, the, the biggest thing I got, and I know you guys will do a great job. Y'all got a great organization, and it's fairly, very highly reputable group of people you have around you. I just want to encourage you to remind those drivers on your dump, because you can't control dump truck drivers, but y'all can put some encouragement to those guys. Stay on the haul routes, whatever else they are, stay on the routes. And if they notice that we got roads tearing up, let Mike know.
Yeah, let us know.
As you see them, we know we're gonna have damage. We know we're gonna have problems. But as you see them coming down, don't just say, well, they'll catch it. We will, but it may be a couple, two days later or something like that. So, as you see something tearing up, let Mike know on that same point, and try to stay on the haul routes. That's my big idea.
And we, we get a lot of that off Mount Elm Road that comes this way too, so.
That's our big, that's my big idea.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, just one more opportunity. Is there anyone to speak in opposition on this matter, or in favor of this matter? Either way, if you gentlemen don't have any more questions, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. This time, it'd be appropriate to take action on the application. Um, and if we need to go back through the conditions again, uh, just to be helpful, we'll be glad to do that.
Alright. Uh, well, I don't know if there's any other conditions- Uh, well, I don't know if there's any other conditions set forth, uh...
So, you had an hours of operation. If you want to set that as an eight, eight AM to four PM Monday through Saturday, no Sunday hauling, obviously, no night hauling of any kind. Water truck on site, uh, which obviously is for dirt, uh, it's for dust. Uh, the flagman requirement, which would help with, uh, traffic control and safety issues. A sign at the entrance, obviously, warning the motoring public that there's trucks entering and exiting. Uh, if, if there is going to be a haul route, I think the haul route's gonna end up being that it stays on Hollybush, both back, all the way back to twenty-five, and then, uh, to, to whatever point to the east, uh, would be necessary. And then, on a haul line, you would need to discuss, decide whether or not you want to implement that or if you want simply to have ingress egress controls that the road manager oversees. And then, if we see any damage to any of the roads, uh, that we get on top of that immediately. That would be my suggestion.
And also, uh, just know that we need them to work with us as far as truck drivers go.
Yes, speed control.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Monitor the speed limit.
All right, okay. I'll, uh, I'll make the motion to approve that.
Yes, sir.
Motion by myself, second by Daniel. Any other discussions?
You're also conditioning this permit or you're, you're placing a three-year limitation on your conditional, conditional use. It expires three years from the date of this hearing. Can I also suggest that we let it expire contemporaneously with the DEQ expiration? If that's different, I think that'd be easier for everybody, uh, that those are timed together. And so, what we'll do is...
Well, they're gonna re-up that.
Yeah, well, this, this conditional use application would expire as well.
Same time.
So, they have to come to us as they are moving through the DEQ process. That would be my suggestion, that we time it to expire, whatever that is. It expires the day that the DEQ.
All right, I'm in my motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Daniel. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, um, if we're, uh, that public hearing is closed, if I didn't close it, I think I did. Uh, item G's is, uh, a, uh, an emergency acknowledgement of public road damage in River Chase subdivision. This is Supervisor District Five that was caused by, uh, the storm last week. It's pursuant to nineteen eleven twenty-one. This damage occurred on March the tenth as a result of the storm, uh, due to the need for immediate preservation of access to real property for emergency response, access to the public street, and the necessity of public health and safety. The board, uh, is, would be, if it, uh, accepts this motion, to declare an emergency pursuant to nineteen eleven twenty-one, ratifies the issuance of purchase orders and authorize and ratifies payment of all invoices submitted for payment pursuant to the emergency declaration. You'd also be authorizing a budget amendment if necessary, uh, and, uh, as a result of the emergency and all expenditures occasioned thereby.
All right, does anybody have a motion? I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any other discussions?
Yeah, I, I want to say one thing on discussion wise.
Yeah.
I, I want to put whatever...
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be planned.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I want to put whatever importance behind the discussion Harrison's having to have with PRV, for them to understand the importance of these water line locations and sewer line locations at his discretion. And I want to be sure we ask, and I want to say it on the record, I want to say it, however we want to say it, for PRV to understand the importance of, that if we need to ask to move a water line or fix a water line properly, or we don't feel like the water line's been fixed properly that's causing this damages, Mike has the authority and the ability to do whatever necessary to get our road back in place to prevent further damage in the line. Because the way it's set up right now, they came in and gave us a, I'm not thinking of the right adjective, a bad job in patching an existing water line that was there now. We've now, we believe have that corrected, Mike. Or, or we're gonna have it corrected this week before we cover it up. But I, Mike needs some teeth to get into PRV to get these lines done correctly. So, I want to make that clear on the record that, um, we need PRV's cooperation.
No doubt. Well, there's a whole other thing now that's uncovered, but...
There's a bunch of it, so...
Well, over the weekend, found out that the other side of the road where the sewer line is, has a void running thirty-four feet. I haven't heard back yet. What, what was the end result? Well, can we go ahead and finish this motion?
Yeah, I, I, I just want to put that out there as far as, you know, on the discussion side. You gotta have it, because it's not just the county there. And the cause of this is not the county's issue.
Oh, well, it's even more now.
Yeah, it's getting worse.
Yeah, you hear the rest of it.
Which is, well, I've heard it. I just want to be sure we get Mike the parameters to go where he needs to get us, so...
All right, we got a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Now, we...
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, go ahead and tell everybody what happened during the weekend.
Basically, what we got is, and y'all got any questions, I've seen it too. So, basically, we got a West Rankin sewer line that comes under the road, down the road. It's got a void that, I don't know, I could probably call seventy-eight foot up there, you know, beside the pipe that's under our road. Now, the way we left it Saturday was, when I left there at four o'clock, they was arguing who was gonna fix it. And they was looking at me and I told them it wasn't gonna be me. So, it was kind of like I told PRV Saturday, you know, I'm gonna be frank with it. They didn't want to re-fix their water line. So, I mean, I basically invited them to the board meeting this morning, but they didn't fix the water line instead of coming to the board meeting this morning.
So, we have a, two holes still open over there. The form is, they still don't have the endless board and...
We had to rip out, so, we ripped out all our forms already.
At, at their request.
At their request, they was fixing to come in, redo the water line, couldn't do it with the form. So, we ripped out our forms and then somewheres in the next thirty minutes, somebody decided, "We're not gonna shut the water off. We're not gonna fix the water line. If it blows out, it blows out."
Oh, oh, somebody. I've been looking for him for a while, you know?
Was there anything in writing, them telling you to take it out?
No, Jerry, but I mean, I'm sitting here talking to the public work guy.
Oh, I know.
It's no different to me, you know?
Oh, I, I agree.
He's telling me what he's fixing to do.
And that's, I don't know where...
Thirty minutes later, he gets a phone call, "Oh, we, we're not gonna spend the money to put two forty-fives on." You know?
Let's walk through where we are legally, okay?
Uh-huh.
So, you've got, you've got two different issues going on. It's PRV's water line. We feel purely, pretty confident that we can point to the issue with the water line as at least in part responsible for causing the issue with our road, okay? We feel pretty confident that we can make that connection, you know, which makes that a PRV issue in addition to it being a county issue, right? So, it, then it becomes a discussion of, well, who is, at, at what point is PRV completely responsible for a road failure or not? Or at what point is the county at least partially responsible for it? And that's, those are all issues that, generally speaking, that it's not good to have those discussions when you're in the middle of an emergency trying to get a road back open, right? So, these are all, these are always gonna be things that we talk about after the fact.
And I, and I guess my argument is, I get stuff breaks and tears up for the first time. But when we go in and we patch it and we know it's not right, and we know it's not gonna work.
Excellent point.
And we can't get them to go from that, from this point on, that falls to me on PRV's side.
That's correct.
So, Mike did a great...
We've been trying since Wednesday morning to get this line redone. And we're out there Saturday evening arguing over it.
Still wondering.
What was it they did Friday then? They came out there Friday with all, or Thursday, with all those, that wood and, what were they doing? Just propping it up?
Yeah, just put a piece of wood on it. But I mean, they put two dressers on it, put two dressers on the eight-inch water line and you got a hub about two foot away. I mean, we're steadily watching it inch out of this hub. I mean, it's gonna come loose at some point.
They didn't put any tension rods or anything on it, porting it back, concrete back?
And, and their engineers didn't think it was right. Well, their people, so...
All right, so, let's start there. You got a PRV issue with the water line. You've got a West Rankin Utility Authority, which FYI, I, this whole time, I've been assuming it was a PRV issue, but it's now, I'm, now I'm being told it's West Rankin. So, you've, you've got two different political subdivisions in play here, right?
It's not PRV's responsibility, it's on their...
West Rankin feels like, am I right in on this question? When the water line blew out, caused that void, but they're gonna camera it and make sure.
That was a discussion Saturday.
It makes sense.
How, yeah, it's on the other side of the road.
No, it's on, it's on, it's on that, it's on that water line side. That's not West Rankin's, that sewer line that's going through the box on the other side. That's PRV's sewer line.
Yeah, I thought that was where the void was.
Uh, the void's over here.
All right.
The void is around the forty-eight inch sewer line.
More than likely, the longer we talk, it, it becomes more clear to me that this is probably a PRV issue all the way around. Sounds like West Rankin's gonna be able to establish that they are not responsible, that their sewer line has not breached anywhere, that the perp, the cause of the void around the sewer line is water from the PRV water line.
All right, so, all right, so, let me ask this one again. I'm probably the most, well, now, Mike word left out. I know I'm the least knowledgeable on this whole issue that it can be. But is there not some kind of restrictions on proximity of sewer lines or water lines that's out there for Department of Health? Is there not some? So, when you, so, when you mentioned that both, so, now, did you say the sewer line and water line's on the same side of the road?
Where is it?
Can they do that?
Where is it?
It was right there, it was right underneath the water line that broke them.
But in, in there, in there a parameter out there between sewer line and water line?
We just uncovered it.
But I don't know what those are, I mean, I'm just...
Yeah.
We uncovered it.
Right, I mean, I, I knew that just from people cutting stuff, but I don't know what those parameters are. How close is the water line and sewer line together?
Out there?
Yeah. Inches? I wouldn't say that falls inside their parameters, would you? Inches?
Well, of course, the county is not in either the water or sewer business.
So, but I get, but I guess my point on that is, now that we've seen it and we're aware of it, I think it would be a good idea for you to paper up something to PRV, explaining to them that in case they didn't realize, that within inches of the water line is a sewer line.
Yep.
That we've now seen and now are aware of it.
That's right.
And put that back on, on there.
But the huge thing, man, this body, this has been open for a week.
I know.
We can't just indefinitely, you know, go back and forth.
I, I'm a hundred percent with you. I'm just saying, now that it's exposed, it's kind of like, the physician gets in there and cuts your leg. That's why I'm here. I found something else, you know?
It, what, what your motion is doing here is simply authorizing the county to issue, to make these repairs, to issue payment, to adjust the budget. There, there's nothing in this motion that addresses pursuing any sort of recovery. All of that can be done. It doesn't have to be done as a part of this motion. You need to think it through typically what hap...
Yeah, I just want to get to a point that, let's see if it fails again. That they come back to you and they say, "Well, you saw it and you didn't do anything about it at that point." Now, we know the sewer line and water line's on top of each other. We know it probably wouldn't fix the proper way.
Right.
But I'd like for you to document this in some form or fashion and to come back and say, "Well, man, you saw it and you were good with it and you covered it up and fixed it."
Right.
So, you shouldn't have covered it up if you knew any better, so...
So, where does the main sewer line run?
Comes, when you're coming down River Chase north, Jake, and you looking, you know, where Miss Campbell lives, straight through that opening, you can see Speedway Road?
Yeah.
That's the main sewer line coming right down through there, right down through the road.
It's under the road?
Uh-huh. And it cuts through right there about that inlet.
Is that why there's cracks in the road now?
It goes right in behind that house. Well, it's, it crosses the road and goes in behind houses. It goes, it just kind of works its way all the way through it.
I seen these pictures this morning where there's water coming up out of the road or the crack in it up there where the fire truck was. Is that what's causing that?
I couldn't tell you exactly what that is or not. But southwi- West Rankin, I said south, West Rankin is gonna camera their sewer and identify if they've got a problem. But when they left the other day, they just lined this pipe a year and a half ago. They don't feel like they've got a problem. The void goes up in there so far. Uh, our thing was that, you know, it needs, the void's gotta be fixed before we can button up the road.
So, this money, is this what we're approving gonna fix that?
Somebody's yard.
Is that what it's doing?
I'm trying, Jerry, to get, I'm trying to get West Rankin or PRV to pay for the void.
I know, but I mean, so, I mean, this motion, this motion is actually fixing all that.
The motion gives authorization for all of what we're talking about to be classified as an emergency declaration under nineteen eleven twenty-one. It, it gives, it gives the parameters so that your road department, purchasing, your administrator can all act with authorization to address whatever it is that has to be done. You guys are gonna, uh, you're gonna trust your staff to make the best decision for the county that they can make, which may include demanding, delaying activity and demanding that PRV get to a point before we take any further action. But we don't need to be waiting to take action once we get to a point where we can get the road button back up. So, that's what you're doing. You're, you're putting this in a position to take care of it.
So, what is PRV saying about the void? That they're, have we even discussed it with them? What are they saying?
I, I say that ain't their, their sewer line.
That, that, well, and, and, and I agree with them, it's not their sewer line. But it is their issue on where the sewer line is. So, and that's kind of why now, once we've exposed this and, and broken into it, I'd, I'd like for you to...
Yes, so, the county's position obviously is, hey, PRV or West Rankin, you got a void under the sewer line, get it fixed so we can button the road up.
That's it.
Because now we've seen...
Let them decide which of those two is responsible. Because the one thing we definitely know is not the county's responsibility. The county didn't create the void.
By being crude, but can the county just not fix the road till it's fixed?
I think, well, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a hard one to say, but I'm saying, we can't fix the road till it's fixed.
I, I agree, especially now that you know.
We, we really can't fix it.
Because it's gonna blow out again if it's not.
I guess I was just stupid in assuming that they had come out there and take care of the problem, you know?
Well, I, I'm hoping you've got that message. If, if not, you can take that message to them today for sure.
We can't fix it till they fix theirs? Yep, that we can't fix the road, do they fix that?
We can, if not, we cover it.
We can't leave them two holes there, man.
I, I know, I know, I was just saying, but we can't...
Well, what we did, what we did, Jake, what we did was, is we moved to the other side of the road. You know, we was trying to get that one side done, so, we moved to the other side.
Yeah, the downhill side.
Downhill side, to shore it up, get the box built. We have that built first of the week. The RV's gonna schedule relocating their water line because they have to cut off River Chase and I think R and B, I don't know what they said.
So, this is first week?
I told them they had to Wednesday to move.
No, I'm talking about finishing the downhill side, the box.
Right.
Are they, are they, are they working on it currently?
Yes.
Okay.
I know it's a date, but we, we had totally re-ramped whatever we had on that one side and we're moving to the other side.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't want, nobody think we're procrastinating. I mean, we're doing everything we can do.
No, it's not you, not you at all, but, I mean, we see the problem.
The issue of responsibility and potentially recovery by the county can be addressed. We can address that.
So, anything from this point forward dealing with this, we're gonna send them a bill for.
Document it and we'll address it.
Yeah.
And if, if they don't pay us, we'll get it out of their hide somewhere else. They, they need the county.
Yeah.
We will find a way to deal with this at some point.
If you maybe want to ride out there just to see it, to pay for it.
I think, just a little bit of good news out of this, Jake. I think we're gonna get, we're gonna get some money back on this from our other declaration that we had. I talked to Mimi yesterday on this and we met that, we didn't meet it, but the state met that threshold. And the reason why is because West Rankin had a sewer, my word, that right, West Rankin had a sewer blow out somewhere. A twenty-five million dollar deal. Or somebody had a sewer blow out over there. And so, the state met that threshold, so, Mimi guy told me to send that information in. It should be able to let the city, that's all, on that right there. Was related to stormwater damage during the flood.
All right, what else do you need, Slay, you think?
Yeah, so, we're gonna amend the motion just to reflect that we, that the, whatever damage occurred uh, contemporaneously with the, with the, uh, West Rankin Utility Authority breach, uh, and that it manifested, it first manifested on March. But we think that the potential issues that we're dealing with at the road probably occurred sometime in mid-Fbruary, contemporaneous with the, with the West Rankin Utility Authority breach.
So, how long are we gonna wait until we actually go out and fix it and get the road back open?
We're working on it today, Jake.
So, we're moving forward now? So we're moving forward now? We're not waiting on West Rankin?
We're moving forward.
Okay.
I told everybody to have the other side fixed by Wednesday. We will be on that side Wednesday morning, on Wednesday afternoon.
So if they don't do it by Wednesday, Wednesday, we're gonna take over and finish the project.
We'll do what we gotta do.
All right. Everybody getting with that? I don't know if we got much choice.
Well, I mean, but I, I just want to be sure we put the emphasis on them.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna take over and dig in those yard words.
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do their water line, but I think, at that point, I'm engaging- I'm engaging Craig if I don't see no action by Tuesday afternoon.
We can't wait another two weeks to, to address this.
I think if Slay gets into them on that, it won't take the whole-
I think we gotta handle it Saturday afternoon, though. But then that's for sure.
Now, they're gonna come fill the void under the sewer line.
I know that one.
That's what I'm talking about.
I'm talking about one. That one there, I'm waiting on West Rankin to give the roll down or-
I mean, am I, I'm correct saying that they, if we can't get the void filled, we can't finish buttoning up the project?
Can't.
That's right.
Okay, so we can't just wait for two weeks to come back and deal with this?
But you wouldn't want to cover it up, not correctly?
No, I'm saying, we, we gotta have a time, we gotta have a time, we're gonna go in and finally fix it, if they're not going to.
Therefore, we had a void.
They think that's gonna happen, they're not gonna fix it.
Therefore, we had a void, Jake.
I don't know.
If the void rocks, you know, if we can't get it done, you know, and it's holding up the road. I think we talked yesterday, Saturday, about require a bulldog to come out there and haul that home and secure it. And we'll, we'll move on, and then Craig, I think, soon, somebody will-
The thing about if that doesn't hold up, and we've done it, it doesn't hold up, this looks like we're gonna be back responsible.
Yes.
It's on us.
That's the potential.
Once we touch it, it's our fault. At this point, we're trying to get them to do it, but I mean, I know-
Nobody can blame us, obviously. We're trying to get public safety personnel to houses right now that, where they can't. So we've got a basis to do it, and your declaration authorizes us to do whatever we gotta do to get public safety response to those folks.
Whatever money we spend on fixing the void with West Rankin's sewer, I want us to get back, hundred percent.
And we hope that that won't be necessary. That's our, that's our hope.
All right.
Okay?
I'm hoping from, I'm hoping out here from Bruce Steele this afternoon, you know, he already engaged a contractor to come camera.
Bruce Stevens?
Bruce Stevens, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they're, if they're coming inside their pipe, you know that's not it, you know, but-
Well, he wanted to make sure that he had, didn't have a leak or, or something like that. But I mean, we, we did not see no sewer problem out of them, so.
So Jay's motion is this emergency declaration pursuant to nineteen eleven twenty-one with a recognition that we believe the incident that resulted in this declaration occurred in mid-February contemporaneous with the West Rankin Utility Authority breach. And it manifested itself on about March ten by damage to the public road. It took it a while to surface, okay? So that's the motion.
All right, I'll amend my motion to reflect the change.
Second.
All right, motion by myself, second by Jerry, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Mr. President, item H is an acknowledgment of receipt of an application for personal property tax exemption that was submitted by UMMC Family Medicine Clinic for the personal property, not the real property, the personal property that's located within two-four-six-six Floewood Drive. That's a leased facility by UMMC. This exemption is granted if the board authorizes it pursuant to Mississippi Code Annotated Section thirty-seven, one fifteen, three. Which is a specific exemption for the University of Mississippi exemption from county tax, municipal tax, state tax.
Yeah, do you need a motion or action?
Yes, please. Need a motion to authorize?
I thought we just sit here and go-
Motion to authorize exemption.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Daniel, second by Jerry, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Ms. Austin?
Thank you. The first item I have, this is on our new Rankin County Courthouse facility and its authority to pay JH&amp;H for their architectural surfaces for fifteen thousand, four hundred and one dollars and fifty cents in authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jerry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
B is on the renovation of the Chancery Court Building and its authority to pay JH&amp;H for their schematic design in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred dollars in authority to issue that check.
So move.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jerry, any discussion? Yeah, before, you know, he came in and said they made some changes. I, I would like for us to look at them and approve them before they go into effect, especially before we go out for bid on, on all this.
I would think he's coming back to us with this, wouldn't you?
He will be.
I mean, I don't know what this bill is for, really.
Drawing it?
It's, it's schematic design, and it's only a portion of it, you know, they bill incrementally on it, so.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to make sure that before that they go make changes to the original layout, that they come to us and show us what they want to make.
I, I'm waiting on that. I was thinking this was just for the drawing.
It is. They, they will. They'll come back.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next item is on our new courthouse facility and its pay application number thirty-two to Chris Albritton Construction. Three hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents in authority to issue that check. They're also requesting thirteen additional days due to adverse weather conditions. And the architect is also approving, then in their opinion, the thirteen rain days are warranted because of the rain in January of twenty-twenty.
Craig, can we put that in two motions?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just gonna do it for the first, and we'll let the second one die, I guess, but-
All right, so let's split that and make that two separate motions.
So my motion's to approve the three twenty-six, six ninety-one, twenty-seven, and issue the check.
All right, motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Yeah, I'm not making a motion on the second half, so.
Yeah, I make the motion to deny.
To deny? All right, then I'll do that. I'll second that.
Motion by myself, second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, the next item is authority to purchase three Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles. The three VIN numbers are listed, and it's also authority for the deputies to travel to Missouri to pick up the vehicles.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jerry, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Item E is approval to renew our postage machine lease agreement between Pitney Bowes and Rankin County for a term of sixty months in the amount of six hundred and seven dollars and ninety-two cents monthly.
So move.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jerry, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And F is authority to amend the contract between Rankin County Sheriff's Department and Vital Core Health Strategies for additional medical staffing in the new misdemeanor facility at a cost of twenty, two hundred and twenty-two thousand annually. And this amount will be in addition to our current contract price.
So move.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right, do we have additional business? No? All right, executive session?
I've got some personnel things I want to talk about, if we can, please.
Craig, do you have anything else?
Sir?
Did you have any litigation or anything?
No, sir, nothing, nothing.
All right. So I have a motion to discuss the need going to executive session for personnel made by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Tax collector.
Did you find anything on the loan?
No.
Yeah, I thought they did.
No, I don't think, I don't think so.
Yeah. I forgot that one.
I don't know.
You may, I don't remember it. Hey, Caroline, who?
Do we know anything on the, on the-
Hey.
Well, the money.
We got a windfall in yet?
Yeah, that's, that's what it was.
Have we got a windfall in yet?
I'll do it. Thank you, bud. Thanks for telling me.
I think, I have no idea what all these checks are for.
I'm sure.
I have no idea, but I think, I think we need to just sit down with him, two of us, me and you. I looked through here, every road that it was done, almost, it was supposed to be. Cape seal, chip seal, cake seal, cake seal, cake. And they came up to half of whatever these are. Motion.
She's telling me to put my name on her, I thought I-
You did?
Yeah. You don't have to.
I was just trying to get out of all that.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, I have a motion by Daniel going to executive session.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, a first thing I wanted to mention-